Twenty-fourth meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, standing on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's gonna get vicious tonight.
Mrs. Miller.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Shabbett.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor LeBeau.
Here.
Counselor Edwards is absent.
I could get John in trouble for it.
Consent agenda. The approval of regular session, council meeting minutes, September tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Counselor Hilton abstains, absent. Approval of executive session, meeting minutes of August twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Received and minutes for the following boards and commissions: the Board of Campuses, the Personnel Board sixteen, Tiverton Prevention Coalition, and the Planning Board. Correspondence received and filed, approval of tax assessor abatements, request to advertise for public hearing on proposed zoning ordinance amendments to Appendix A zoning thirty-two dash one thirty definitions on October twenty-second. William D. Compton, Administrative Officer for the Planning Board, August monthly report, Treasurer Denise Sherret, August budget and revenue report. Would any of the councils like to take anything from the consent agenda? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Open forum announcements, comments, and questions presentation, the Tiverton Recreation Commission, approval of special event permit for annual Tiverton trunk or treat to be held on October twenty-seventh, rain date to be held on October twenty-eighth at the Tiverton Library, thirty-four Roosevelt Drive, from four-thirty to eight-thirty. Is anyone here from the recreation?
Madam President, I'm going to speak on behalf of doing the usual trunk or treat that they've done for the last three years. It's gonna be on that Saturday, October the twenty-seventh, with the rain date, the twenty-eighth. Anyone who would like to participate can contact Indian Kenya at four oh one eight three seven zero seven seven seven, and it's open to the public.
And we probably should put that on the website so that people will see that.
Yep. So we're looking for permission to do that.
I'd like to entertain the motion to approve the trunk or treat.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve a special event permit for the annual Tiverton trunk or treat for October twenty-seventh, rain date, October twenty-eighth at the Tiverton Library, from four-thirty to eight-thirty P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Renee Jones, EDC, lien, e-permitting.
Renee Jones, one six one Highland Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island. Since the last time I spoke to you, we have been speaking to people from Rhode Island Commerce, Newport Chamber of Commerce, Commerce Rhode Island, and the Department of Business Regulation about two programs that we're interested in bringing to Tiverton. One of them is called e-permitting. At this point, twenty-seven towns in Rhode Island already have e-permitting, and what it allows people to do is get their permits online. I know we've been talking about the fire department and the police department getting involved in that, but they're hoping to get Tiverton, the whole part of Tiverton, involved in that. We spoke to Liz Tanner, who was with Commerce Rhode Island and now is with the Department of Business Regulation, and she recommended that the other program that we were interested in, the lien program, which is now called Municipality One, is something that we should look to do first, because it, in fact, clarifies and makes the whole process of going for licenses and permits a lot faster, because what they do is go into town and work with the people that are working in town to go through the whole process step by step to see how they could eliminate duplication, you know, if there's some way that they can do something with one form instead of three, and, in fact, it's something that we feel would be beneficial to the businesses in town. We also feel that the e-permitting would be beneficial to anybody in town, because you can go for permits online without having to worry about coming into the office. But the reason I'm coming here is because, town hall, not office, the reason I'm coming here is because a year ago, when we were coming before you, before, for our budget, we requested eighteen hundred dollars. A thousand dollars was supposed to be for the lien program. We were given a budget of eight hundred dollars, and the thousand dollars was taken out and was supposed to have been put in the municipal budget, and we need the thousand dollars. So we need to find it. We have spoken to Jan, and he is, you know, gonna be looking for it, but I thought I would mention it to you so that we're all up on the same page. The thousand dollars is the town share. A thousand dollars is the amount of money that they say the state provides us when having consultants come down, and a thousand dollars is provided by the Rhode Island Foundation. So it's a good deal for us, and it gives us a chance to look at how we do our paperwork in town, and if there's ways to streamline it. So I would just like to ask the town council to say that it's a good idea that we should go ahead. I know that it gets crazy around here around these next few months, but you can, in fact, go ahead and sign the contract and then work in terms of when is a good time to get the people to come in and when you can do it in the office. So I'm just encouraging the town council to support the efforts that we do, the lien program or the municipality program first, and then that we go ahead and look into e-permitting for the town. As I said, there are already twenty-seven towns in Rhode Island that have it out of thirty-nine, so I think we need to move this along, and that's why I'm here.
All right, well, at this point, I'd like to refer this, if it's all right with everyone, to the town administrator, and then we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Jan?
Just a quick update. We are actually about to get training in the e-permitting program that has been in the works for arguably too long, but we had to resolve some issues that, in particular, the assessors' office needed to see resolved so that it would work for us here. I have experience with this in Warren as well, which did the same thing and which also did the lien program. I totally agree that going through that exercise is very valuable. It makes the most sense before you actually go electronic. I had been told originally that that had already been done here, so I kept focusing on just getting us to the point of training and then actually implementing the e-permitting. I was somewhat surprised to find out that it had not been done, so now we will do it for the next stage, which is probably the clerk's office. So Nancy and I will be working together on that and getting that done, hopefully, before we actually do any actual setup and design of the program for the licensing. So that's where we currently are. E-permitting should be in effect, I would say, within, actually, this year for sure and hopefully within a couple of months.
Yeah, they were hoping by December that most of the towns would be online with that.
We're gonna do our best.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, I'm just adding my voice to it, because I think it's something that's important for the town and for the businesses in town.
Yeah, and so I'll put this on the last meeting in October, and we'll have an update on it and see where we are. Okay, thank you. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Public hearing, a proposed amendment to Town Code of Ordinance, Chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash one through fifty-four dash thirty-five, recreation, open space and other town areas and buildings, open to the public. Anyone here from open space that would like to speak? Gary, why don't you put that seat over there?
Good evening, Madam President and council members. Testing. I think the first thing that needs to be said about this ordinance is in relation to the dogs. I know there's a lot of interest in that subject, and I want to be clear that this ordinance changes nothing in town regulations about dogs. This ordinance only changes to bring itself in conformance with the other ordinance that was passed, I think, maybe about three years ago. That requires, and I'll just read directly from it, "No person being the owner, keeper, or having the charge of custody of any dog shall allow such dogs to go at large upon any road, street, highway, public, or private property within the town." So when that was passed, we went to work to change our signage, our trail guides, and ultimately, because there were a lot of other things involved, to bring this ordinance in conformance with that. So that's where we are. We reviewed it once before, and I'm here to respond to any questions that have come up.
Before I open it to the public, any council questions while we have Gary at the table?
I have a question. Never mind the dogs, we'll get to them. I got fifty emails on the dogs. The guns, you left the gun, the firearms, and federal law allows anybody with the ability to carry to have their weapon anywhere for personal protection. Number six on here, with the no firearms, why do you feel that you have the right to tell licensed gun owners with concealed permits to carry for self-defense that they can't carry their gun in Weidemore Woods or anywhere where it's legal, other than federal building where it's not legal?
There really wasn't the intent, but that was in the old ordinance, and it was just carried forward. There's no hunting down there allowed, except for bow and arrows, so that seemed to be consistent with that.
I'm not talking about hunting rifles or hunting shotguns, I'm talking about concealed carry.
I understand what you're talking about.
Well, the way it's written right here, I can't go in the woods with my concealed weapon.
As long as you have a permit.
Right, if you have a permit to carry a concealed weapon, you're changing federal law, you're changing state law, and I'm just saying you, it was on the record books before, right now it's come to light. So that needs to go away, to start with. I mean, that's my big thing, that's what's going on with this right now. So I did some research throughout the day, and we don't even have the right to do that. This could be a lawsuit against the town.
Chief Jones, would you like to comment on this? I know I'm catching you off guard, but that's okay.
I thought the last time it came up, he, Chief Jones, got up and said, as long as you're permitted, you could carry.
They stopped him from coming up last time. You got the brakes put on him on his way up.
Patrick?
So...
I'm not putting the brakes on you today.
Not at all. So, yes, I mean, the power to permit people is held with myself and also the Attorney General's office. So someone who is legally authorized to carry a firearm concealed can carry a firearm. If it is the will of the council, and I would also defer to the solicitor, for this specific purpose, if they wanted to restrict that, could you add more restrictions? This battle is actually being had on the school department side, so that the Department of Education through executive order has issued that even permitted people cannot carry on school department grounds. However, legally, there is no enforcement power by the police. So I think this is definitely a question that's out there. From my perspective, even if this ordinance were to pass, if someone were legally permitted to carry a firearm, the police would be unable to enforce any laws, because they would be legally authorized to possess it and carry concealed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, would you like to give your two cents?
A couple of points. The first one is, it's, oh, sorry. Under Section fifty-four dash thirty-one subsection one, there's no hunting or trapping allowed, except by special use permit by DEM. So that's an exception to six. The second part that the chief said is correct. There could be no enforcement. That's an exception to six, too. I think, and I don't want to put words in the mouths of the committee, but I think this is more directed towards, you know, the paintballs and all of that type of thing. You know, perhaps somebody out there that does not have a concealed carry permit, and perhaps is using firearms just for recreational purposes in these areas. I think that's what it's directed towards. So if there were an exception, put in for six for those that are licensed to carry, and also reference to subsection one, because the hunting is not restricted just to the bow and arrows, at least from my reading, I might be missing something, then I think you're okay with the rest of subsection six.
So we could tweak those?
Correct, yes.
With that firearm to say, unless licensed to carry, but in no means to hunt in these areas, something to that effect.
Well, hunting is allowed by permits.
That would be a special permit.
Correct. So with those two exceptions, that should still accomplish the goals of the committee for this, while respecting relevant law.
How does that sound, Gary?
I have no problem with that.
Madam President?
How does that sound, Mandy?
Not good.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, because now you're linking, by what you just said, you're putting paintball guns as a firearm. It's not, you can go to Walmart and buy a paintball gun.
Yeah, but they don't want paint...
Okay, that's fine, but you can't list, just because it shoots something, it's not a firearm.
Yeah, they...
A rubber band gun shoots something, it's not a firearm.
They separated it out. It's no firearms, metal detectors, paintball guns. So after the firearm comma, the two exceptions should be put in, and then the rest of it goes on.
Licensed to carry and...
Correct, yes.
No hunting unless special permit.
Correct.
Is that all?
I mean, I don't like this whole ordinance altogether, so I'm voting no on it anyway. So it's fine, you can say whatever you want, and I'd like to keep the firearms out, so we can have them.
Okay. Everybody okay? At this point, I'd like to open this section for public comment. Anyone in the audience who would like to share their opinion or comment, please come forward. All I ask is that you state your name and address.
Good evening. Glenn Allen, forty-six piece of Way in Tiverton, or Tiverton if you're a telemarketer. Just as a frame of reference, I walked this morning from seven-thirty to eight-thirty in Weidemore Woods with my dog Effie, Chocolate Lab, off-leash the entire time. We ran into one other person who also had their two dogs off-leash. This afternoon, I walked on Weidemore Woods at four o'clock. There was no one on the beach, except two fishermen at the far end. My dog is a retriever. We tree for a number of throws, and the dog brought him back in. This law, this resolution, would not allow that to happen. To give you an idea of what some other towns are doing, my wife and I spend our winters in southwest Floridas. I'll mention a couple of towns: Fennesse, Poker Grand, Sanibel. Most of you know these towns, it's very big, very large towns, very successful, lots of money. Each of these towns promote that they are pet-friendly, not only in terms of restaurants allowing dogs outside, but every one of these towns allows one or more of their beaches dogs off-leash. Now, maybe here in Tiverton, we don't have merchants that need additional revenue or money from other people, and if that's the case, then fine, but, you know, I'm sure that with elections coming up, members of this council probably don't want to risk facing hundreds of angry dog owners who do not feel that their dogs would be treated fairly under this measures. Dogs need to run, they need to be free, they're a free spirit, and we love our dogs, and I'd hate to see the restrictions get any more severe than they are right now. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, as you know, I've been wanting a dog park for years and years. Since we don't have one, at least pay attention to what Mr. Allen said, and, you know, go that route until we have a dog park or something, where dogs do need to run, plus some older people who can't hike the Weidemore Woods would like a safe space. So I think we should get our act together and do satisfy dog owners, and since it was brought up, the outdoor seating, I think if you're addressing outdoor seating and spaces, you might as well add along dogs on outdoor terraces while you're at it. It would maybe save some time in the long run before that comes up for another couple of years as an agenda item. Just a suggestion, we could save a lot of time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Donna Cook, Hilton Street. The last time we talked about dogs and leashes was a couple of years ago, as you said, and my family all has dogs also. The problem being is I'm not against dogs running, having a good time, love dogs. The problem is that when I've been in Weidemore Woods with my grandchildren or anyplace else, and this dog that I do not know is not on a leash, starts to run towards me and my grandchildren at Weidemore Woods, it frightened the crap out of me. I did not know, they're going, oh, it's friendly. How do I know it's friendly? It's running at me. I don't know the dog, I've got my grandchildren with me, and it's just a fright, frightened, because they have no control over the dog. As they're yelling for the dog to come back, the dog's not listening. So where does that leave someone? It's a strange dog coming at you with no one in control of the dog, and either you're standing there as the dog's running at you, when you have a dog and they're coming after your dog, or they're coming after your kids. They might be friendly, you never know what a dog's gonna do. They're a dog. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Russ, why don't you come closer so you can be next?
Hi, Tom Ramatowski, seventeen Bodwin Road, and Chairman of Conservation Commission. Just like to let you know that I have full support for the revisions that we have in front of us today, and it's been unanimously approved by our commission as well. We were the owners, well, if this passes, will no longer be the management part of the conservation down, region down in Fogland. The issue of dogs has been brought up many, many times down there, and I'll just bring a little more comments to it from what I saw. It's not so much ones running on the beach that are the problem, it's the conservation side, we've been trying to build up the dunes, restore that area, it's very fragile. There was one gentleman, he's from Massachusetts, saw the license plate a couple of times, but he would drive up in a van, and out would come ten or twenty beagles, running around as a pack, carving new paths and things into the fragile areas that we had replanted with grass into the dunes. So there are people that take advantage of the door that you open by not having animals under leash during these times. So it's really not anti-dog, it's just trying to protect the investment that the town has made in that area. If you go to any other beach that has dunes, you'll notice the rules say, keep off the dunes even for people, and there were people down there that just let their dogs run wild and damaged the vegetation and damaged those very fragile areas. So that's the real impetus for this, and there was wording to that effect in the old version, but the animal control officer, for some reason that I could not fathom, interpreted that only to apply to the southern side, to the recreation beach, and not to the conservation area. But I think the conservation area actually needs it more, and that's why I support the rules that, the rewrite that actually has owners keeping them under control, at least for that side. And I guess with that, I just say, I do think the changes in general are very good and are needed, and it also makes it a bit smaller and easier to read for this entire section, which is nice, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Russ?
Hi, good evening. Russ Smith, one ninety-eight Meadowview Lane in Tiverton. And last Friday, I sent an email to Council President DiMederos and the other council members, I don't know how many people had a chance to read it. But the first thing I should say is I'm a dog lover. I've had dogs all my life, and actually, many Tiverton residents, who I consider to be among the most responsible dog owners, entrust their dogs to me, and I hike every day at Weidemore Woods with dogs off-leash, typically three or four at a time. And I'm more comfortable talking with my dog lover's hat on, but I'll put on my retired attorney's hat for a minute, and just respectfully disagree with Gary on this issue about a perceived conflict. In two thousand and thirteen, as I recall at the encouragement of Chief Blakely, the council did pass a general leash law. In my opinion, it's not a good fit for Tiverton, which is still very much a rural town. When you pass these ordinances, they apply across the entire town. South of Bogomash Road, you've got houses with big yards, you've got people with acreage, you've got farms, and yet we're stuck with a leash law that essentially says that a dog needs to spend his life on a rope. It says that a dog has to be, even if the dog is on his owner's private property, regardless of the size of the property, it could be an acre, it could be a hundred acres, that dog cannot be off-leash on his owner's land unless the premises are enclosed by a physical fence, or an invisible fence, a so-called electric fence. And I don't understand why, if I own a fifteen-acre small farm in south Tiverton, while I'm out mowing my fields, my dog can't be walking around with me, sleeping under his favorite shade tree, what have you. If they leave the property, venture out into the road, sidewalk, and adjoining property owner who is within his rights to call the police, that's one thing. But we do have a leash law that actually says, if you want your dog to be off-leash on your land, and you don't have a physical fence, you have to chain the dog. We have an ordinance that encourages the chaining of dogs, which every animal rights organization in the nation has condemned, for good reason. It breeds aggression in the dog, chained dogs get bored, bored dogs bark, and now you've got neighbors complaining about excessive barking. Dogs can be strangled or suffer severe leg injuries by being tangled up in a chain or cable, and of course, they're at risk for attack by coyotes. Anyway, for what it's worth, I think the leash law really ought to be fixed, at least in that respect. Secondly, when the leash law was adopted in two thousand and thirteen, the council could have repealed all of the many parts of Chapter fifty-four that address dogs and where they can be, and under what conditions, and at what time of year. The council didn't do that, and I'll stop being a lawyer after this part, but if you look at Section one dash eight E of our code, like all municipal codes, they don't allow ordinances to be repealed by implication, if you will, or by inference. So if somebody looks at Chapter fifty-four, and it says that off-leash dogs, under positive control of their owner, at Weidemore Woods is allowed, well, it's in the code. And to say that, well, we passed a leash law, and actually, the leash law is the only game in town now, that's the only thing you need to look at. Under Section one dash AD, it says, "All sections, articles, chapters, or other provisions of this code, desired to be repealed, should be specifically repealed by section number, article number, chapter, or other number, as the case may be." That never happened. So to my way of thinking, there's no conflict between the so-called leash law, which is...
Ten dash thirty-three.
Thank you, ten dash thirty-three, and Chapter fifty-four. You've got a general principle, dogs should be leashed, and then you've got fifty-four, and I'd be very cautious as a council to say that the provisions pertaining to dogs in Chapter fifty-four didn't survive the passage of the leash law, because the most important situations pertaining to dogs are in fifty-four. I'll give you an example. Dogs, even if they're on the shortest leash known to man, are not allowed at recreation areas: the Bogomash Skate Park, the playground, the running track, the softball field, the town farm rec area, Main Road. If you see a dog there, Paul Bell has every right to issue a municipal court citation. Fogland Beach, Grinnell's Beach, dogs have to be leashed, but they can't be there on Fourth of July weekend or in the summer, only from Columbus Day to April fifteen. To my mind, those are the most important restrictions, and although I'd love to see some of them go away, I do understand that there's some logic to that. Probably a leash law is not a good idea, and there are a bunch of kids on a playground. And the gentleman who preceded me about the dunes, I agree with him. The Fogland Beach Conservation Area should be off-limits to unleash dogs. That brings me to Weidemore Woods, it's the one bright spot in this town. I called the clerk's office on Friday. We have six hundred sixty-two dogs registered in the town of Tiverton as of last Friday, and the number is obviously higher, because we all know that there are dogs that ought to be licensed, but they're not. So who knows how many dogs we have? It's at least six hundred sixty-two, that's a lot of dogs. And if you look at all the open space in Tiverton, we have, and this doesn't include the playgrounds, the beaches, the ball fields, just open space, passive recreation, two thousand four hundred eighteen acres. You've got Pardon Gray, two hundred thirty acres. Weidemore Woods, by far the largest, seven hundred fifty acres of woods with miles of trails. A-Rod Farm, a DEM property, three hundred thirty-seven acres. So Power Marsh, another DEM property, three hundred forty-two acres. The Emily Ruckel Wildlife Refuge, if you don't like dogs, if you have a deep hatred of dogs, if you have a fear of dogs going back to a childhood trauma, you can go to the Emily Ruckel Wildlife Refuge, you're not gonna see a dog even on a leash, because it's an Audubon property. Audubon properties do not allow dogs. Also, the most recent addition to our open space is Percasset Ridge, five hundred forty-one acres. It's co-managed by the Open Space Commission. It's co-managed by the Open Space Commission, the Rhode Island Nature Conservancy, and the Tiverton Land Trust. 541 acres. The only one larger is Weidemuh. They have decided, after some, as I understand, internal disagreement, to ban all dogs. Even if you're on a leash, you can't go to Picassett Ridge if you're a pup with your owner. So we're shrinking and shrinking and shrinking. Weidemuh Woods is the only place in the entire town of Tiverton where a dog can be a dog. Now that said, and in the email, I mentioned this to people, as somebody who walks with off-leash dogs every day, year-round, all kinds of weather, I've been doing it for several years, dogs from Tiverton, some from Little Compton, great dogs, the most well-behaved dogs you'll ever meet, because they're tired. Tired dogs are not just happy dogs, they're calm, they're socialized, and they're not fear, fearful, and fear breeds aggression. When I walk with these dogs at Weidemuh Woods, Monday through Friday, sometimes we go out in the morning, sometimes in the afternoon, I can honestly tell you that 80% of the time, we see no one, and this echoes the first speaker. Weidemuh Woods is primarily visited on weekends and holidays, and that's just a reflection of how we live our lives. We're busy at work, at school, family obligations, running errands, if you're gonna get back to nature, you're gonna do it on a Saturday, Sunday legal holiday. Four hikes out of every five, the pups and I see nobody, nobody. The one hike out of every five, we might see a mountain biker. Many of the mountain bikers know my dogs by name, they greet them and we chat. We might see other people who are here tonight, who are out walking with their dogs. But we don't see large groups of hikers, we don't see, you know, families with kids, that's on weekends. Which gets me to my first proposal, which is, at least allow responsible dog owners to understand the importance of off-leash exercise and socialization, to walk with their dogs on weekdays at Weidemuh Woods, and then exclude Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays when dogs would need to remain on a leash. The last point I would make is, when I first moved to Tiverton in 2010, I was thrilled to find out that there was a place I could bring my golden retriever, who's still with me, still hikes with me every day with the other pups. And I stumbled on the ordinance, and I saw that it said, "You can have a dog off-leash at this 750-acre wooded parcel, miles of trails, but the dog has to be under your positive control." Well, so far, so good. Then I start looking for a definition of positive control. Guess what? It's not there, not in Chapter 54, not anywhere in the code. I hike sometimes in Dartmouth, at properties that are managed by the Dartmouth Natural Resources Trust, the DNRT. They have a recall provision, which is in their signage and in their rules, and what it clearly says is, "You cannot unclip your dog and go for an off-leash hike with him if he is not trained to return to your side," which gets to Ms. Cook's point about a dog who's running and isn't heeding his owner's command. That dog should not be off-leash. I think there should be a ban on dogs with a history of unprovoked aggression, that's in my proposal. And I think the vague phrase "positive control" should be replaced with three very specific provisions that I think would go a long way towards ensuring that all encounters go smoothly. That somebody with an off-leash pup carry a leash at all times, that's just common sense, that the dog be trained to return to your side in response to a recall command, and that the dog remain within your eyesight. If the dog is a quarter mile up the trail, that's irresponsible dog ownership. If you see your dog, you can monitor what he's up to. So I would respectfully ask that those changes be made to 54-31-4, and allow Weidemuh Woods hiking to continue, with those preconditions and prerequisites built in. The last point I'd make, I had a couple of dog owners scold me after I sent the email, because they said, "Well, what about the fact that some of us can't get there during the week?" Which is a good point. And I do know people who will take the time to be at Weidemuh Woods at 6:30 in the morning so they can get in and off-leash walk with their pup before people begin to arrive. So my only other thought would be, maybe Saturdays and Sundays, leashes required from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, or 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and give dog owners who can't get out there on a weekday, the way I can, a limited opportunity to hike with their pups before cars start to pull into the lot. I appreciate your time. Sorry I talked so long.
That's all right. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Justin Katz, 189 Ketchikan Road. I hadn't come here intending to speak on this issue, but reading through the ordinance and listening to people speak, I think it speaks to a broader problem with the way we kinda do things. You read the ordinance, it's no guns, no dogs, no glass bottles, no smoking. It's a lot of stuff that's hypothetically, if you're in a group of people, you don't want smoke near them, okay, I get that. If you've got dogs that charge during a busy time of day, that's, that could be an issue. But that's not the way we ought to impose our rules. You ought to impose rules against the things you don't want to happen. So if, if you have a dog that charges people, that could be something that you restrict, that, or if you're smoking near people, or if you're breaking glass bottles and littering, or if you're brandishing a gun, you restrict those things, not just these blanket laws. As some people have suggested, there are all different kinds of locations that these laws apply in town, and it's not only that, there are different dogs, there are different dog owners, there are different times and different dates, and these blanket restrictions just aren't the way we ought to do these kind of things. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'd like to close the public session of this hearing. Any questions or comments from the council?
I'd like to give Gary the opportunity to comment on any of the things that...
Well, we do have problems down there. I get, I get calls. Pearl Mary Lou, she gets most of these calls and relays them to me, the messages about dogs running wild down there and not being able to be comfortable. And I've had people actually tell me they don't go to Weidemuh anymore because they're afraid of the dogs. So that is an issue, and I, I think the, the real problem is in defining, I mean, if we tried to say, you know, we used to say, "Under positive control," and then we, our latest group society just said, I think it says, "Either leashed or at heel on the trail." All of those are things that mean different things to different people, and they don't mean anything to some of the dogs. I really think that a dog is really, I mean, the only way you can really say he's under control is if he's on a leash. All these other definitions are fine, except they're wishy-washy, you know, and, and basically, they, they are not, they are not followed. I mean, even, even the, the rules we have now, or the rules we had before, under positive control, and that is, that is vague, I'll admit that, but it was something there to try to get people to control their dogs. So the only clear definition is on a leash, and he's either on a leash, or he's not on a leash. So that's what we went with, and that's what was in the town ordinance, so.
All right. There's a Toyota RAV4 that's parked on someone, someone's property with the mask plates. If you own that car, please remove that. Thank you. Anyone here? Okay, I'm sorry, Gary, go ahead.
So basically, we have had problems down there. There are people that don't go down there because of the dogs. You know, I wouldn't have any way of knowing what the numbers are or anything, and there are, I mean, basically, we, I mean, he mentioned Weidemuh Woods is the only place. There's Basket Swamp, there's Fort Barton, we've got miles and miles of trails that, that people can walk their dogs on. So the issue really is, what are the rules that will offer safety to everyone and still allow the dogs to get out and enjoy the trails, too?
Madam President?
Thank you. Randy?
I got 25 to 40 emails on this leash law, and...
We all did.
Yeah, we all got the emails. I answered everyone personally, and my thought is, after speaking to, back and forth with all these people, the responsibility is to the dog owner. So if a person has a dog that's gonna attack somebody, they know to put it on the leash. We can't keep micromanaging every aspect of this town. We need to let, if the, the dog's running free in Weidemuh Woods and it comes back to the person in there, nobody's gonna bring a vicious dog up into the woods. It's not, I mean, it's just, it's idiotic for the owner to do such a thing. So putting leash law in effect right now, it just doesn't make any sense. I haven't heard of anybody getting bitten, attacked, anywhere in this town from a dog. And now, all of a sudden, now we're gonna fix something else that's not broken, so I just can't, I just can't go along with a leash law. I can understand, not like the guy said, with the beagles, that's, oh, protect that area, but let these, let these animals... I'm not a dog owner, I like them, I use them to hunt, but not mine, because I don't wanna take care of them, but the people who do have them need to let these dogs run around.
Have we had any incidents of dogs attacking people?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm not a dog owner either. I, every time I've gone down to Weidemuh Woods, I've always bumped into dogs and people, the dog owners and the dogs have always been fine. I have not had a problem. The only time I've had a problem is when I was walking on the road and a couple of German Shepherds came flying over one of those invisible fences and scared me to death. And I said, "That's it." But I've never had a problem in Weidemuh Woods. I don't like the idea of having to put, have people put leashes on them all the time. I understand the one about the dunes, that makes, that was more, I, I think that that's a different situation, and for that, I wondered if you could do something like, you know, make, make it clear that you can't put, the dogs can't go loose on the dunes. But I also think, I don't know who else said it, I wouldn't restrict Weidemuh Woods to, I wouldn't do it without, you know, that you can't, you go on Saturdays or Sundays. A lot of people go on Saturdays and Sundays, and I'm telling you, I, I have gone there, and I've never had a problem. And I used to be scared to death of dogs, and, and I'm not. And it's like, and people have been very, so I would, I would like, except for, I think Randy said the thing about the guns, if you would, if you could change that, and if you could change the, I would, I would prefer to have, not have the leash laws, with the exception of Weidemuh Woods, I would be okay with that. And I've also read, we've got emails from somebody from California, in different places, and they've said they had have different, different ways that you deal with it. And it's like, if it's different ways that other places have dealt with it, and they've dealt with it successfully, then I'd be okay. But just like what Madam President said, I haven't heard any problems about people being bit by dogs, and except, you know, one of the things that you said, but the police chief said there wasn't any issue. So I would prefer, keep Weidemuh Woods, people have been doing that for years. And unless there was a problem, I, you know, I don't think we need to impose more restrictions. That's, and I'm not a dog person, believe it or not, I'm a cat person.
So what you're saying is off, so what you're saying is off-leash at Weidemuh Woods?
Off-leash at Weidemuh, yeah. But also, I think what, I think this thing with the dunes, that makes sense to me, that, you know, you wanna protect the dunes, so I, but I can see that that's a doable thing, you don't have to have leash laws everywhere. So, so I'm, I'm just saying, you could do it different ways, and that's what I would prefer.
Any other comment?
I have a question for the solicitor. Tony, is there an inherent conflict here in ordinances between Section 54 and the leash law that Mr. Smith was mentioning?
With the ordinance as proposed, there would not be a conflict. For the exceptions that are being discussed, I would also recommend that an amendment be made to Section 10-33 to make an exception, because as the gentleman pointed out, Section 10-33, that's a blanket ordinance, and it would cover all of these areas. So if you were to make an exception in this ordinance, you should also carve out an exception in Section 10-33.
Can I ask why we, we don't let dogs go up in the Cassett Ridge? Is there a reason for that? That you don't want dogs there?
Yes. The reason for that, it, first of all, it was gonna be the one place in town where dogs are excluded, so those people who are not comfortable with dogs can go enjoy it anytime, and that's the only one. The other one, that's not a town property. The, the other one reason was that bow hunting is allowed up there for several months out of the year, and that's kind of an incompatible, you have dogs running around with bow hunters, hunting deer. And the other thing was that that whole area was, from the beginning, was seen and, and sponsored by DEM to be a quieter, more natural area. The trails are less groomed, it's a rougher area, it's, it's more of a natural ecology, so those three considerations were taken under account to have the one place that the town has trails that would exclude dogs.
Well, Eight Rod Way, there's bow hunting, and there's bird hunting, everybody has their dogs off-leash when you're bird hunting, and they hunt together. So it's, can't call it a problem because hunters, because hunters are the safest gun handlers and, and bow handlers and that area, so I can understand a safe place for people to walk.
It's not a safety issue, it's...
But don't, I don't like the idea of mixing it in with, with hunters maybe shooting, making an act, because it, again, it's never...
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying the, the dogs running around and hunting...
Right, without a dog, right. But hunters hunt down Eight Rod Way, they hunt with dogs, and they hunt with bow, and they hunt with black powder, and it's all done at the same time, and there's never been an accident there either, so. I can understand saying there's no dogs there so people can walk there, I can live with that part of it, but not the gun, the gun, dog, bow hunting thing, it's just, doesn't quite sit.
All right, the Emily Rucker, that's private, that's...
That's right, that's not it, right.
...by the town, so that's, that's why, okay.
Right, so there's only one exception.
There's another place where people don't want to do the dogs.
Right, okay.
That is a point, though, of the many properties Mr. Smith mentioned, a number of those are not under the control of the town, and so whether, what the DEM regulations are, or the Audubon Society's regulations, or in the case of Pardon Gray, which is owned by the Tiverton Land Trust, which is not a, you know, it's a wonderful thing, but it's not a town entity, we don't have any control over the regulations that those entities choose to make for their properties.
Well, I, I think we can word something to go back to the, some form of positive control that does say it has to be done. I mean, this sort of got started because the town changed the, the big ordinance, so we thought we had to, and, and we thought there was, there was an issue down there, but I, I see the handwriting on the wall, we can do that. The, so that's doable. The other issue that was brought up by Counselor Hilton last time was the restrictions, or the rules for the Stone Bridge abutment. And the last copy I sent you had one statement in there, and I think we need to make sure that's okay. I think it'd be on the last page, it'd be Item F, under additional rules for recreation areas.
For the abutment area.
Right. F, special rules may be adopted for Grinnell's Beach and the Stone Bridge abutment, as approved by the town council. That's gonna be so different than what's been there before, we're not sure what's, all the implications are in terms of lighting and rules and so on, so that just kinda kicks it down the road a little bit until we, we know what that is.
Until we open it up and see what it is.
Right. And then there's one other, I, this is just a clerical error, right above that, that same section there, in, in paragraph, sub-paragraph E, starts with lifeguards on duty, I think. There was the statement, because of what was said in the old town code for the beaches, we changed that, and something was left out of the copy I sent you, and here's, here's the way it should read. Lifeguards on duty during beach season may order swimmers out of the water during inclement weather or dangerous swimming conditions. That actually was brought forward from the old, the old code. They may also order the beach, order off the beach any person who violates posted beach rules and shall notify the Tiverton... rules and shall notify the Tiverton Police for enforcement if necessary. So that second part was already in there, the first part somehow got omitted, so I'd like to add that.
Any questions, any further questions from the council?
Just, Joe. Now, this, this ordinance is also deleting Chapter 50-1, beaches.
Correct.
And I don't know if that's clear with the, with the advertisement. So, and I think I asked before, and I didn't have the, the document in front of me, but are all the provisions in Section 50-1 included in this?
No, they're not. Here's the ones that are not. It's a very short thing, there was only four items. One that was not included is, no person shall bathe or swim in the waters adjacent to the beach unless clad in a suitable bathing suit. You like that one?
You're discriminating.
So, so does that mean this, this would allow nude bathing?
The second one, no life preserver shall be worn in the water except by children under 12 accompanied by an adult. No flotation devices will be allowed in the water except Coast Guard approved. We deleted, we didn't, the only two we brought forward is, is the two that are in there. The other one left out was diving from the shoulders of another person or throwing another person in the water are forbidden. We didn't bring that one forward either, so.
But I think we should leave the bathing suit in there.
You do because of the nude bathing?
Yeah.
Well, we could, we don't have to put appropriate bathing suit, just a bathing attire.
Chief, is it legal to bathe naked down there?
He's not going to answer that.
January 1st only?
No, it is, no, it's against the law anyway.
Dude, is it, dude, are these sort of generally not allowed anywhere, whether you're bathing or not?
Except for nude beaches.
Right.
So, Joan, you think we should...
It has happened. It has happened.
You take it out, someone will do it. And the police can say...
It has happened.
The person's going to do, they're just going to do it anyway, in my view.
Yeah, but that's public exposure, that would be under other laws, but...
It won't hurt, it won't hurt to add, wear a bathing suit.
Especially after dark.
I'm not going to lose any sleep if you want to put it back there.
Tony, what do you suggest about the bathing suit?
Under 9-45-1, that's considered disorderly conduct.
Right, so do we have it included in this?
Technically, no, it's a misdemeanor.
Well, that's what I thought. So if somebody is bathing nude at the beach or swimming nude, then it's against the law anyway, it has nothing to do with this ordinance.
They won't say it and they'll be nude.
Watch this, it'll happen next week.
And I just want to say that I, I agree with Randy on the firearms, a person, certainly with the concealed carry permit. The whole purpose of it is to have it concealed and to be able to carry for personal protection. And that should be allowed. As far as dogs, I have been a dog owner, and I'm well aware of dog habits, and they, they love to run, and when the leash law came into effect, I fought it because I, there are electronic devices, you can put on, a dog collar on and have control over the dog, and, but that was recommended not to be put in there as a positive control for a dog. So, and I understand, certainly if you're, if you're hunting, your dog is not on a leash and you will need to let it run around however many acres you're, you're hunting on. So I can see the era in the original leash law that would impact any, any private property hunting, and that's not a good thing. So I, I certainly agree that if there, I'm certainly sympathetic with dog owners and how they would like to manage their, their pets, and I think there are responsible dog owners, and occasionally you will see one that is not as responsible. And I certainly would like to see this revised to allow that to continue. The dogs do need a place to run, and certainly if you have a hunting dog, you need to be able to train them to follow you and heel as you would do in a hunting situation or have them go side to side in a field as training. So I can, it's very limited places where you can, can train a dog, and I certainly would support changes to this to, to allow that to continue on the conservation areas or...
Whedomall Woods?
Whedomall Woods. Well...
Would we just make it Whedomall Woods or make it broader than Whedomall Woods? That's my next question.
I would prefer it to be broader. I don't see any problem with several of the other locations that are, I brought the book.
And especially put something in here about the beaches, the conservation areas.
I agree with Mr. Ramontowski about the, the dunes, that should, we should have signage that says there's no, nobody walking on those dunes.
There is. They, they are there anyway.
There's just so much we can do to enforce that unless we have...
You mean, nobody listens to the signs?
Nobody reads them.
That's a possibility.
So Gary, would you suggest that we send it back to you with what we are saying, or do you want...
I, I, I think I'm able to reflect the wishes of the council if he'll approve this as amended. And he'll, he's going to check it anyway, this listener's going to check it anyway. But we've got the license to carry, write that exception in.
And there was something else there, license to carry and...
Well, there's the exception for...
Hunting by permit.
By permit.
Yeah.
So, license to carry and hunting by permit.
Restore some form of allowing dogs off-leash under positive control.
Yeah, I kind of liked what Russ was saying about that they remain within eyesight that...
Yeah, we can, we can work that out.
Certainly they should.
And then the protection of the dunes. And I think that's, I think that's it, what I heard.
Tony, could we approve this with the suggested amendments and then, then have it come back to us?
Well, actually, I, I prefer it, because this, this is, what we're discussing is easy, but in my mind, I'm thinking that there's going, I need to take a look at some of the definitions...
Okay.
...in other areas of the law to make sure that what's put into the ordinance is appropriate. So I think the best thing to do is just to, you know, to send it to me for the next meeting, and, and we'll give you...
And we'll put it back on...
Yeah, something, I, I hesitate to say that now because I understand all this, you know, the concealed carrying, I'm going to have to check the federal law, and I want to make sure that what we're saying is correct.
Okay, so we'll refer it to you and Gary to work together and, and come back to us on our next meeting.
Absolutely.
Are we going to keep the public open so...
That's already closed.
Well, I just closed it.
Oh, did? So then, so if something comes up they don't like either, they'll just email us and then we'll deal with it? If they need, they need, the public needs to, and who knows what's going to...
It's going to be posted on our agenda, right?
I could definitely just advertise another public hearing at, at, it would be the end of October, Neil, because October...
Can we just continue this one?
I closed it, so I guess I could open it back.
Continue it again, then have the council reopen it if there's any public comment on it, that's fine.
So we can reopen it, okay. Yes, go ahead.
So in, in doing all this, you know, I have to say, for now, I'm, I think Whedomall being the largest place, if we're going to allow dogs off-leash and have a place to run, I think that Whedomall is an appropriate, okay, place to start with. I don't know that there are a lot of others, whether either we don't control them or environmentally it doesn't make sense, like Fogland where they're going to end up in the dunes and things like that. The one thing that I, and this is just a suggestion for the Open Space Commission, is that whatever language that you come up with, that we also, you know, get serious about some signs and some public education. You know, nine dog owners out of 10 might be really responsible, but it only takes one with a really badly behaved dog, or, you know, somebody who, who ignores the rules to create an unfortunate situation, or the kind of situation that Ms. Cook mentioned where, you know, somebody is really scared or fearful, or somebody gets hurt. And I think that, you know, we need to have signage that reminds people that, you know, this is a privilege that we all have, and that, that we need to be responsible about, about it. And I say that because all of the signs that we have in Tiverton and in general are often ignored, whether they're the dog signs, or if you go down, for example, the Fogland Beach and you look at the staggering amount of litter that's down there, we just don't seem to have a lot of respect for signage these days in this community. So maybe there's a different way to get the point across to people, and maybe we'll have a better level of compliance in terms of that small percentage of folks that, you know, don't seem to think that the rules apply to them.
Any other comment?
I just, my comment is, we, it seems like we always punish the people that do the right thing for the one person that doesn't. And I, I just think that, you know, we got to stop doing that. And we put up signs, people don't read them anyway. We spend the money, put up signs, we did that at Grinnell's and Fogland, and we still get trash and people still...
Oh, we still can put up signs to try anyway.
People just don't pay attention to them.
Anyone else from the council? So do I need a vote to direct, or can I just get a vote to continue this?
Continue.
Do I have a...
Motion to continue.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's going to be continued until October, okay, thank you, I don't know when that... It would be the last meeting in October. Yeah. Okay, so I have a motion in the second to continue this until October 22nd. All those in favor? Thank you, everybody, for participating. Proposed amendment to Code of Ordinance, Article 6, Outdoor Seating, Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages, including 6-83, to regulate outdoor seating for holders of liquor licenses in addition of Article 3, Section 22-11 through 22-13 of Chapter 22, Business Regarding Victor Ling License. I'm going to ask the town administrator to speak first.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to offer some observations based on my own short experience with this matter. I first learned about it when I came on board in March. I learned that it went back to well before then, with, I believe, the first discussions happening in 2017. When I learned about it, I understood at the time that what the council wanted to do was to actually address issues that had been raised from time to time by abutters and other people who were concerned with possible impacts related to outdoor seating. And that the council wanted to do that on a consistent basis, not from time to time, not now and then, and perhaps in different ways with different applicants, but find a way to make sure that people get treated the same and that there is predictability and consistency in how the council does this. That was my understanding, and actually still is, that that is what the council meant to do at the time. The issues and concerns that I thought I heard about included noise, traffic, parking, zoning, and compliance with both local and state regulations. And that included compliance with state regulations that relate to septic systems, and that has become the, I think, most prominent and also most controversial issue. On that, the council has been consistent, as far as I've been able to tell, in saying and acknowledging that it has no jurisdiction over septic systems, and that it defers to the Department of Environmental Management in that regard. But at the same time, the town and therefore the council has a legitimate interest in issues that affect public health and safety, even if they are not under town jurisdiction, but under state jurisdiction. For example, an interest in compliance with state regulations that relate to food safety, health, and water quality. And it has done that. So when issuing licenses, the council can and sometimes has to, under state law, I believe, make sure that applicants are in compliance with applicable state law and That's what I think the council has been trying to do, and as far as I can tell, for good reason. The council has also been consistent in wanting to avoid, to the extent as possible, disruption of business operations, especially for seasonal businesses during the busy season. And therefore, the council, at one of its meetings, asked me and the solicitor to come up with a reasonable interim solution that would carry us through the summer season. And we have tried to do that in consultation with a group of restaurant owners that were most affected. We had a meeting with them, and we've had some further communications with them as well. After that, we issued seven interim approvals for cases where we had either documentation of compliance, but also cases in which the licensees would certify that they were in compliance, if only by working with the regulatory state agency in question. That gave the applicants time to resolve any outstanding issues, and that was the whole purpose of going this route. Unfortunately, no people who were issued the interim approvals returned them signed. So that says something about how successful this effort was. What I think the key issues were that we had to grapple with was, first of all, that several restaurants constitute what we call non-conforming use under the zoning ordinance, although many of them, if not all of them, are legally existing non-conforming. Then the question is whether outdoor seating was also pre-existing, so has to be more or less grandfathered, or was more recent and thereby an expansion of this non-conforming use, which creates a legal problem if we don't send it to the zoning board, if we have to go to the zoning board. So that was one issue. The other issue, perhaps the most important one, is that in several cases, we don't have clear documentation that shows that the business is in compliance with state regulations. And that really, that's, applies in particular to health and environmental regulations. In many cases, we have that. In most cases, I think we have the health documentation. In many cases, we don't have recent environmental documentation, even though that I think was meant to be in the files in, in the building office. So that became a problem that we've been trying to deal with. And from my own perspective, I feel that we have bent over backwards to be as helpful as possible to limit disruption to the business, to offer ongoing help if it's needed. And the flip side of that is that when I hear that this whole effort is being characterized as an effort to shut down business in town, I, I am just flabbergasted. And I think it's extremely unfortunate that the issue is being changed to something that it is not. I think it's a distraction away from the real issues, and a lot of those issues are, in fact, related to compliance, that some of the business owners apparently have not been able to resolve, and now we blame the town for it. I don't think that's right. I also don't think it's right to characterize this as if it's an effort by one or two members on the council to shut down businesses, or a particular business. I have zero reason to believe that that is true. And I just wanted to state that, state that publicly because of what I've heard is being alleged in the media, including social... because of what I've heard is being alleged in the media, including social media. So based on all of this, since we're going into a public hearing, that could get very emotional, I think it's extremely important that commentators focus on the real issues and the real concerns, do not get into false accusations, do not rile people up to make it all very emotional. These issues can be solved, but we need to all be very honest and interested in actually solving it. Thank you.
Thank you. If it's all right with the council at this point, I'll open this up, um, for public comment. There, I believe there's gonna be a lot of people, um, asking to speak, so if people could limit their comments to about five minutes, is that clear, Joe?
I understand how to follow the rules.
Okay.
I may not like it, but I understand it, and I do follow the rules.
So state your name and.
My name is Joseph Souza. I live at 49 Hancock Street here in Tiverton. I have several questions, starting first with, have there been any show cause hearings, any violations for noise that have gone out to businesses that have outside seating in the last 10 years? Because I can't think of any. In fact, the last time I remember a show cause hearing, I think it was Manny's Cafe up in the north end, and that was back like in the late 90s. They had a fight up there with a bunch of bikers. So, that's, I'm just wondering why, all of a sudden, we need this ordinance? What's the emergency here that requires us to have an ordinance? That's my first question, for anybody who can answer.
Joe, I don't think that it had anything to do with that, and I'll explain it like I did last time. What happened was, there was a new business that came to us, and they, they asked to serve alcohol outside. And it was then concluded that we don't have a liquor license for outdoor seat, seating. Nancy brought that up. Um, and then it was brought up to us that several, several places are doing it right now. So, what we just wanted to do was make an ordinance so people could have outdoor seating and liquor license. That was all it was about. It wasn't about shutting down businesses, it wasn't about people complaining.
No, no, wait a minute. I'm not saying it's about shutting down businesses. What I'm wondering is, have there been any incidents that would drive this to be an emergency to bring it forward?
But what I'm trying to tell you, Joe, that it had nothing to do with any of that.
So the answer was no.
Right. It had nothing.
I only have five minutes, I wanna move on.
Well, yeah, well, I'll take responsibility.
All right, you can, you can talk all you want after this, just give me my five minutes. Here's where I'm going. Just because they have seats outside, first off, when you get a liquor license, it's for the entire property. You're required to have the proper amount of parking.
Mm-hmm.
You have to have a place for people to go outside and smoke, and that's what.
You have to define where you're.
The, when you get a liquor license, it's for the indoor premises, it's not for the entire property.
You have, you're required in that license to have the proper amount of parking. You're also allowed to have an area for people to go outside and smoke, because there's no smoking allowed inside.
But it isn't for serving liquor outside, that's what Tony.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that. All right, now, I said it's required, you, you're allowed to have a place outside for people to go and smoke. Okay? Now, we have given liquor licenses to businesses in town that specifically said they were gonna serve outside, for you, the black goose. Okay? You can bring your alcohol outside, all right? And there are other places that do that as well in town, and they've been doing it for years.
Right.
And they figure, okay, just because they're doing that, doesn't mean that they're increasing their capacity of people that can be. By fire code, you're only allowed to have so many people in that building. So if you have 15 people sitting outside at the picnic tables, and it starts to rain, they're going inside. If you already had a full house inside, you, you, you still are, are subject to the fire codes. So regardless whether it's sitting inside or outside, the number is fixed for that building. You don't get extra seating just because you put picnic tables outside. So that's my point on that, and that's what he was talking about earlier.
No.
About, when you were talking about the septic systems and overwhelming their septic system, they're not increasing their capacity just because they put picnic tables outside, because on the nice, nice, people like to sit outside, smoke, and drink their beer.
Joe, that's, that's not what the issue, the issue is seating, and it's not even an issue, but it's seating outside where, and correct me if I'm wrong, where waiters and waitresses are coming there, serving, giving you meals there, that is increasing your size.
No, it's not. You still are subject to the fire code. You can only have so many people in that building.
Okay, Joe.
Well, am I wrong, Mr. Solicitor, please?
Yes.
Yes.
You're telling me, like, the bar at the end of my street lyrics has a fire code, they can only have so many people in there, but I'd like to have the horseshoes, and a lot of people just stay out there and play horseshoes. But if it rains, they go inside. I mean, that's the thing about the outside seating. It's only good if, if, you know, it's, it's no good for inclement weather. But when you have showers, and the people run inside, and you had a band playing, it's already up to capacity inside, see what I'm saying? There's a conflict there, they're, they're gonna exceed the limit.
It doesn't, it doesn't go by, it doesn't, your liquor license doesn't go by the amount of people served. When you apply for your liquor license, it goes for the premises.
But you have to be in compliance with all of the laws, and that's part of the law. So if they walk in there, and they see you're over capacity, they can shut you down.
If you have a, if, if you're.
You're asking the question, you're answering it, stop arguing. Let him answer.
If, you apply for a liquor license, the premises is defined as the inside, that means you can't serve outside of the premises.
Unless you have permission from the council, like these businesses do.
That's what, that's what this ordinance is.
Okay, so that's already in the license. So now you're creating, and this is my point, you've already established a liquor license for this business. Now you're going on, and when I read in here that they have to have a site plan. Now, this town requires a site plan to be stamped, correct? Which means you have to hire an engineer.
No.
But says a site plan. If I go to the building inspector with any plan, they want it stamped.
It's not, not.
Then it should be stated here that it can just be a, a, a diagram drawn by the owner, because it's not specific. It says a site plan, and anytime anybody brings a site plan in a building inspector's office, the first thing they do is look for the stamp.
And that, for, for those site plans, for building purposes, they have to be stamped. This isn't for that purpose.
No.
You just, it, it does say that, it does say that if, you have to have parking count and everything else if you're adding tables.
If you are applying to the planning board, or you're going for a building permit, it says you had, your plans have to be stamped by a licensed engineer or surveyor.
So you're telling me, if I come in here with my plan, and I took a piece of paper, and I drew down some picnic tables, and a number of parking spots, that you're gonna accept that here in town? I don't believe that.
We, we just did that for lyrics.
We just did it.
I have a hard time believing that.
We just did it for lyrics, and we've done it for a couple of other, um, of.
There, there's a prime example of, of a business that just spent hundreds of thousands of dollars there.
Right, and they have, and they have everything.
You know the kind of financial restraints they're under?
No, they have everything.
And then you wanna add another fee?
Joe, I wanna tell you that lyrics is in total compliance. They did it all, they're fine.
Of course they did, it wouldn't get their license.
Right, right, that's what I'm telling you, so lyrics is not a problem.
And they still, if they have a big event, which they do, and they're all outside playing horseshoes, and it starts raining, and they all go in, just like any other place, they're still required to be within, they're not expanding their business just because they put some picnic tables outside.
Our lawyer just told us that that is.
Well, I'm telling you that he's incorrect.
Okay, fine.
And I don't need a law degree to understand the laws that is written as they are here.
Joe, your five minutes are up.
Well, the only other thing I wanna say, because you talked a lot over me. In the end, you have a lot of businesses in town, and this basically says, this ordinance is not intended to prohibit any lawful existing outdoor seating. The next time these people come for a license, they're gonna have to have all this documentation that you're requiring now.
Not if they already have it. There's some of them that already have it.
But next time they come for a license, you won't have that, so it says in here that people that already have, like, the grill out there in Four Corners, they're grandfathered in, they're not gonna have to apply? So they are, they're gonna have to have a site plan, and show that their septic system and everything else is in good order, before you're gonna give them the outside tables, or they're gonna have to take them out, right? That's the fact, and I think that's what they're going after. I think we're all going after Four Corners again. We're going after the grill.
All right, Joe, you're out of order.
I have my five minutes.
You have not.
Thank you, Randy.
Oh, this is, well, this is normal. Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I, I would like to clarify one thing that is, that predates the current administrator. And the administrator, who came to this late, is a little correct in that we wanted to sort this out. The original genesis of this, and the solicitor can confirm this, is that when one particular restaurant, who now has permission for outdoor seating, came to us and asked for permission to serve alcohol and food outside, our solicitor looked at our application and looked at our licensing process and said, "You're not doing this consistent with state law." And state law says, when you grant these licenses, there's a process that you have to follow, and you have to document it properly. And it is correct that there are a small number of restaurants in this town that were explicitly given permission to serve alcohol outside, or food outside. The only way, as of right now, that you could find that, because we've never done it the right way, is that you would have to know the town council meeting of when that happened, and then you would have to go into the basement, into the boxes downstairs, and find the minutes where it happened. And that's the only way that you could prove that one of these entities was actually given legitimate permission to do that. It shouldn't be like that. The solicitor can explain this, these licenses should state on the licenses or with a piece of paper that's with them, that anybody can get their hands on, that, you know, this business has been given permission to do this. We didn't do it in the past, we were trying to rectify this. That was the very start of all of this, was to actually create a memorialized license that would stay in the clerk's office with the documentation. That was the very beginning of this ordinance, going back almost two years. So, it, it was not about trying to stop things, it was about trying to clarify the licensing process so that it would be clear, it would be fair, everybody would have one standard that they understood that they had to meet. It wouldn't be, well, you go, some person goes in front of the council, and they get it, another person goes in the front of the council, and they don't get it, and I don't understand the difference why, and this council wants this from you, and that council wants that. The whole idea was to have one clear, clarified process, and then have it memorialized properly according to state law for licensing, so that we wouldn't have these situations. Tony, am I missing something here in explaining this?
No, Section 1.4.27, uh, of the Department of Business Regulations, Rules and Regulations for Licensing. Because the state, um, has ultimate control over licenses, they delegate, um, to local licensing's board the ability to grant licenses. Subsection A is, all licenses granted or issued must identify a premise for operation under the license. The license premises is that portion of the licensee's property owned, leased, or controlled by the licensee, on which or from which alcoholic beverages may be sold, served, or stored. It shall be defined by the licensee at the time the application, newer renewal is filed, and finally determined by the approval of the local licensing board, that's the town council. Subsection B is, in addition, every applicant is required to submit to the local licensing board and keep current and accurate drawing of the license premises outlining and giving dimensions of the area which is actually the subject of the license. Any sale, service, or storage of alcoholic beverages outside the license premises is a violation. Subsection C, once the license premises established, any expansion thereafter shall require a license, shall require a hearing as prescribed in Section 3-5-17, and the approval of the local licensing board. A decrease in the area of the license premises requires notification to the local licensing board and a filing of a revised drawing. Any notice of a decrease in the area shall not require a public hearing. And unfortunately, when this all started, that's the, that's the section of the law that I was citing too.
Madam President.
Yes, of course you can.
When this whole thing started two years ago, the only thing that the council had asked for the businesses was, give us a defined area where you right now serve alcohol. All we wanted was a drawing like I did right here. This is where we're gonna be serving alcohol, present that at your next license, and you'll be granted for what you're doing, for where you're gonna be serving, where you have been serving. And then it blew up into what we have right now, because there was a lot of other details and issues and all of the kind of things that came up. But originally, when we sat here, that's all we asked for, was a drawing.
Right, because that drawing would define how many seats they had and where you were serving alcohol.
Well, the seats came in after the fact, and I didn't, that's a few things that I didn't like about what this whole ordinance was. We cared about where the liquor is being served, so the state and the town was on the same page. And then it started blowing up into, well, the septic system, well, the outdoor seating, well, there's extra seating. I have to agree with Joe, uh, on this, where the seedings are. If you're inside, you're inside, if you're outside, you're outside of this. You can serve 40, you can serve 40 in that whole general area. That's all the town is looking for. And that's been going on, I've been talking to all the owners of the restaurant, and they're all fine with doing it. It's all this other stuff being piled on top, which is, I believe in my mind, is unnecessary. It may be necessary, but where I sit, it's not necessary. You do, you draw where you've been doing.
Actually, that's where, that's where I agree with Mr. Souza, that's the point, the point being, uh, as he, because he was on the zoning board, he knows that, um, the size of the business you can have is governed by the amount of seats you have and the amount of parking he has. That's where the details start coming in. So once the premises is set, the next thing to take a look at is the seating capacity. The next question is, is whether or not there's enough parking on the premises to accommodate.
Those are our rules, is that correct? That's state, some of this.
Well, you, you know, that, you have to comply with zoning.
Right, okay.
So once the premises for the, for the alcohol to be served is, that's when all these other issues come in. The zoning, because you have to comply with zoning, that goes to the seating, and he's correct. If you have the, the parking capacity, and you can establish that, and once the premises is approved by the town council, that's where all of these things flow, because whenever you approve a license, you always say, it's subject to all the other conditions, the health, everything else that you need to go on. The predicate question is, is the premises for which the alcohol is to be served.
And that's, that's, that's where I'm at, that's what we started with. We just wanna know where you're serving the alcohol, and then everything else blew up into this. If somebody's seat's 40, and they have 20 inside, 20 outside, they're good. If they have 30 outside, 10 inside, they're still good, they both add up to 40. That's all we need to do, is just draw as the picture here, throw all this stuff away, come in, comply, they have to comply with the state anyway, when they reapply, they know everything that's going on over there. So we don't wanna put undue stress on this. Give us your drawing, here's where your seats are, don't go over the capacity, everybody goes home happy, and it's done. And we fixed a big, massive problem in two seconds.
That's what we're doing now.
I know. So let's just do that and stop all the other stuff that we threw on.
But, but, the capacity is, the capacity is based on other state regulations, which we have no control over.
And, and local regulations too.
Right, but who, who's been violated here? Nobody has been violated on over seating, on, on septic running, and, nobody, nobody takes care of it.
We haven't even gotten to that yet.
Right, so let's just leave it where it is.
Oh, Jan.
Uh, just one thing about capacity and number of seats, actually a couple of things. One is that there's sometimes confusion, I think, uh, in terms of what the fire department sets for capacity, which is not the same as, for example, what D E M may specify in its determinations. And there's a lot of confusion about that, and people should try, even though it's sometimes difficult, I think, to understand, uh, the, the difference. Um, there's something else, but.
Madam President?
Yeah, I was just gonna let my public speak, but go ahead.
And I just wanna add on to what Mr. LeBeau was saying. It started out with a liquor license and outdoor serving of liquor, and that turned it also into a vitrine license and outdoor seating for that. So it morphed into this huge ordinance where we were only trying to focus on the liquor license and the outdoor seating, the, the serving of liquor outside. That's all this was to start with.
Would you like to comment on that before we go any further?
Um, most, most of the licensees that you have are Class B, which requires also the serving of food too. I think that, that's why that was in there, but, um, I'll just reserve it. I, I'm uncomfortable because it's a public hearing, and so far, only one member of the public spoke.
Yeah, well, that's, anyone else like to come in and speak?
Hi, Ray Fugere, 437 Highland Road. Um, I don't get it. You guys are saying that you wanna keep, the council is saying they wanna keep hands off of business, that they don't, that's what I'm hearing, that we didn't wanna do this, enforce this ordinance, it's a state ordinance. We don't wanna enforce that ordinance, it's a state ordinance. Then why do you have all those provisions in that ordinance? If you don't, if it's already mandated by the state, what do you need an ordinance in town for? Why do you wanna have that control?
Go ahead. I'll, I'll take a stab at answering that.
Yeah.
Um, we don't really want to accept that, and this was, and this was something that the solicitor brought up, which is that there's a history here. which is that there's a history here in Tiburon, where if it's not written in black and white, at some point, somebody says, "Well, it didn't say I had to do that. It didn't." And after discussing this with the solicitor, the advice was to make this clear to everyone, and to any new business coming into town, or to anybody who wants to do this, by taking the time to spell things out. Even, I mean, even if we didn't put these things in the ordinance, we would still have to abide by them. You can't simply go, "Oh, yeah, there's these state regulations that we know that people are supposed to vote," you can't do that. So the suggestion was, we're gonna have, we have to adhere to them anyway. Let's put it in here, so that no one will be surprised. It will be more of a checklist. It will be clearer for people, so that somebody doesn't say, "Well, it doesn't say this in the ordinance. I didn't, I didn't know. I didn't make that." So at a certain level, we could take it out. We're still gonna have to do it anyway. But the thought was, that would actually be more helpful for a business to know exactly what we had to do in order to be compliant, so they would know what they had to do in order to be compliant.
Because this isn't anything new. This is just what everyone had to do.
It's not new.
It's nothing new. It's just spelled out. That's all it is.
So you're just parroting the state rules. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what we're doing. We're just spelling it out for people. This is why so-and-so has a license. This is what they've done. This is what's required. Because, believe it or not, people come in here and they have no idea. And then when they're told later, "Well, you didn't do this." Well, no one told us we had it. Nobody looks at the state law. And, and said, we were just spelling it out. People want to know how to do it. This was nothing new at all. Nothing new. This is what everyone had to do anyway.
It just seems, it just seems to me, any person that's in business, that wants to start a business, who's ever thought of starting a business, has to know there's rules and regulations.
You would think that. We just spelled it out. You would think that, but some people are brand new at it, and they're not really quite sure how to do it. And we've had that in town.
No, I get where you're going with that, but it just seems like it's redundant. And I also have another question on the final section here. Outdoor seating. I don't understand the wording, "Any holder of a vitaling license that lawfully maintained outdoor seating prior to the enactment of this ordinance shall be allowed to continue such a lawful pre-existing outdoor seating, but shall be required to comply." That's right. It seems like, it seems like that's just circular reasoning.
Tony, would you like to explain that part? And I'm asking the lawyer to do it, okay?
Yeah, I mean, that just seems like, well, okay, yes, but okay, no.
It allows for the outdoor seating, but just subject to the regulations. That's all.
Which regulations are, the outdoor, does that not include the outdoor seating regulation?
Yes, but you're allowed to have your outdoor seating. It just has to comply, that's all.
No, no.
I don't understand why it would be shut down in the first place.
Yeah, we have not shut anyone down.
No, I'm not saying you have.
That has to be explained to me. You're allowed to have your outdoor seating, but it just has to comply with rules that you have to comply with anyway. That's what you said. So I don't, I don't understand that.
If they're, if they're already complying, and you agree that they're in compliance.
No, no.
No, see.
No. That doesn't, that doesn't say that.
What does it say then?
Basically says, if you have outdoor seating, you're allowed to continue with the outdoor seating. But you gotta comply with the rules that are here. It's almost like the assumption is, is everybody's not in compliance.
As long as you're complying, you don't have to do anything.
Well, no.
Like, you don't have to.
Does it say here?
As long as you've got a license.
But shall be, but shall be required to comply with the application and review process.
So, so may I try and answer this?
Sure.
Did you hear the part earlier, when Tony was reading the part, about how on the license, the premises are supposed to be described, and there's supposed to be a site map and that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've given out, or not this council, but prior councils, have given out permission in the past to people to have outdoor seating.
Mm-hmm.
There's no site plan. Back then, well, we didn't know to ask, apparently, the councils didn't know to ask for one. So none of the quote-unquote documentation that's supposed to go with those licenses that we gave out exists. So those folks would have to, okay, could you give us the site plan that we're supposed to have? You know, can you hand in the other documentation that we should have collected at the time? Can you hand that in? And as long as you're still compliant with that other documentation, you've got your permission. But we should have all that as part of the license, because that's the law.
So what, so what you're saying, then, is if somebody, if one of the restaurant owners comes along and says, "Okay, here's all my paperwork," you can't reject them, as long as they're in compliance, and it mimics the previous paperwork that they've submitted, even though it was, say, insufficient.
Well, it's not that. Let's clarify. If somebody was legally given permission.
Yeah.
That's the grandfathered, in my mind, grandfathered means to the people who were legally given permission. I think, to me, that's what it means. If they were just saying, "We gave you permission already to do this. You just give us the paperwork we should have collected at the time. We'll put it all in the file with the licenses, like we were supposed to years ago. And as long as you're still basically doing what you were doing back then, yes, there's like, here you go, you're good, we're all set." That's my, that's how I understand that to read. If it is, that's what that's meant, so we're not trying to.
No, Joe, Joe, you already spoke.
Wait, we're not trying to.
They're not complying with parking.
Joe, please.
We're not.
If they're not complying with parking, then you're gonna reject it.
Well, actually, no. That's not what it says.
That's not.
What it says, what it says.
It says you have to have the amount of space.
I'm stuck on my hand.
But shall be.
Not truthfully.
But shall be required to comply with the application and review process. So if you have a prior non-conforming use, then you just put your paperwork in.
This is, this is not to shut anyone down. I, see.
No, I get, I get.
The only thing that I'm concerned about, I would imagine everyone's compliant if they're running a business. I would imagine that everybody cares that their septic is, okay, is handling it.
Yeah.
And DEM has already approved for them to, because they have to go to DEM to open this business.
Yeah.
We're not saying anything that we've changed any of that.
I understand that, except the wording here can be interpreted in more than one way.
That goes with everything in life. Yeah, I know, but come on. You're not, you're doing, you're drawing, listen, I am 100% for the restaurants, 100%. But you're drawing, you're drawing straws on here that, you can't, you can't do that part of it. You can't say, "This can be interpreted this, or this can be," there is no interpretation of anything. All we want from the restaurants, show us where you're gonna serve liquor. That's it. That's the only thing I'm sitting here for. I'm not going for any of this other stuff. That's not what we started doing. I don't care if their septic's right or wrong. That's not our job. Our job is to make sure they have forty seats where they use them. End of story. If they have a septic system problem, the state will handle the septic system problem. They have to show us they have good septic, no matter what happens. I'm not gonna sit here and let you, let you just say that we're doing things that we're not. You know, you're drawing, you're splitting hairs. That's, we're not gonna split hairs. I am 100% for every business, and I'll go down with them all. Because I'm not, just don't split hairs. Keep going. What you're doing is fine, but don't, don't split hair.
I try to stop trouble where trouble isn't there.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Nancy, when this all began, you also said that you had nothing, you didn't know when to give, you didn't have anything specific, that we didn't have an ordinance.
Well, by the council just saying, "Subject to meeting all your legal requirements," you weren't giving me the guidance of where it is, because otherwise, I wouldn't be able to issue some of these licenses. Because sometimes businesses can be selective in what they tell the licensing clerk. They can say, "Yes, I want to do window service, takeout service." And I don't follow through to see that they have tables inside or not, but the health department may have only given us, and we get the letter from the health department. Yes, and from the zoning, and this, and the other. And it may say that they're licensed just for takeout, but they're doing indoor. So all that was gonna do, and it's more than just the diagram that I was given in that packet that the council approved. There was also that they had to sign off for, that they are in compliance. Not that I say they're in compliance, not that you went out and checked they're in compliance, just that, "Hey, I own a business and I'm in compliance." And that's all they had to do. There was like four or five things, but it was simple. Draw where you're gonna be serving. I don't remember it saying anything about parking, Randy, but.
It did. There was some thing about parking.
I don't remember it.
Off-street.
Because I'm not handling it. I can tell you that one business owner did come in and ask to speak to me, but he never, no one ever signed anything, no one ever brought anything to me. And you've got to remember, some of these businesses, it is true, they, you know, it could have been 25 years ago they started. We don't maintain all that records up here in a clerk's office with limited space. That is all down in the archives in the basement, and we do have to keep going looking for that. So even though I may or may not have been agreement, I do need conformity with this. It is a hassle when another business comes in, and well, and that is the first thing that gets said. Well, why is this one doing it? Why does that one do it? Why does that one do it? And we're constantly looking up the records. The idea was to make it clear and clean, and as simple for these businesses as we could make it.
That's, but that's what, that's what the.
But that was the intent, to make it as simple, so that I don't have to be relying on this, "Subject to meeting all legal requirements," when no one was stating, "What is the legal requirement?" Is the legal requirement that your septic system is up today? Well, it's not the town's apparently jurisdiction to do that. But I can tell you, the state contacts that clerk's office for different things when they have problems, and they want to know, "Why did you give this place a vitaling license when it didn't qualify, or this, that, and the other?" Now, it's not routine that they do that, but when they have a problem, they come back to us, and they'll say, "Well, how'd they get that license?" That's not what we, you know, put it for.
But it's the state that comes to us instead.
Well, I don't go to the state.
But until that happens, there isn't a problem. We're trying, we're trying to fix something that's not broken.
The problem is, we're not consistent. That's what you're fixing, that you're not consistent.
Correct.
And all businesses aren't conforming the same way.
But it was an easy fix. We did it. We did the easy fix. Draw us where you're gonna serve. That's the fix. Turn it in with your next license.
I believe the administrator met with them, and.
And then we're good.
Came up with a checkoff list for seven other businesses, anyway. I think it was seven. So I tried to follow that, and I have not had much success.
Have we ever had a problem with the state calling, saying, "I'm not gonna throw anybody out here." Cumberland Farms had a problem with their septic system. If there's a problem, then we deal with it.
Oh, the state will send down notices, DEM will send down notices. Now, it won't come to the licensing. It'll come to the building officials' office and the zoning. And the building.
Right, and then, and then deal with that problem at that time, because the biggest problem we're having here is not where they're setting. This turned into the biggest problem.
No, it has nothing to do with how many.
It has to do with how they're flowing.
You can have whatever seats your permit allows.
All right, I'm gonna continue the public hearing, and Jeff.
Jeff, Karen, Nantucket Road. So if I understand this correctly, what I heard earlier, and what I reviewed, the restaurant will be required, when they, when they come in for their renewal, to present the documents, to show, as Mr. LeBeau just said, where their seating is, and that they conform with this new set of regulations that may or may not pass tonight.
It's not new.
With the existing set of regulations, okay, which are apparently in state law and whatnot. Okay. So first of all, by the town council, by the town council saying, "We're gonna adopt this, all this state law stuff in the town," first of all, what it does is it gives the town council the power to enforce it, once it's a local law. Yes, it does, okay? It gives you the power to enforce it. If you're saying to me that it's in state law, and you're gonna adopt state law at a lower level, then you're creating an ordinance, or whatever this is, this hearing's about, and now you and the town enforces ordinances. So it's part of the power grab, okay? I want to say that first of all. Secondly, the power grab, okay, first of all. Secondly, I want everybody that's watching this, and paying attention here and in TV land, to understand that, that what happened, when these restaurants come back in in a year, at the end of winter, to re-up, that they're gonna be told that they don't conform, and the outdoor seating is gonna go away.
That is absolutely not true, and I think you're campaigning right now.
No, I'm not campaigning, but that's what was said earlier by two other speakers, and you all evaded the question.
No.
Okay.
What you were saying are absolutely not.
Well, I would like, I think that's why every restaurant owner in town is here, because they're upset that this is gonna happen to them.
We have talked to these restaurant owners. They are not all upset. This has gone way out of hand. And what you're doing right now with this microphone is campaigning, and that's not allowed.
And the third thing, the third question I want, okay, is directed, is specifically directed toward Councilor Hilton. And what I'd like to know from Councilor Hilton is, do you know which restaurants are gonna be affected by this, Councilor Hilton? Have you taken a look to see which restaurants would be affected by this, when they come in to re-up? I'd like to know if you've looked at that.
I'm not sure why you're asking me that question.
I'd like to know the answer. In other words, when Four Corners Grill comes in, that is near you, by the way, to re-up, are they gonna have a problem?
All right, Jeffrey, enough. Enough, right now.
I have no idea.
Thank you.
Enough. You know, I am going to take a five-minute recess, right now, and everyone is, is going to take a five-minute recess with me. Thank you.